Good evening and welcome to a series of live debates here on PLG TV 13. I'm Matthew Fogel along with the editor of the Kentucky Standard, Forrest Berkshire, and Kentucky Standard reporter Randy Patrick. We're live from the Nelson County Civic Center on South Third Street in Bardstown. Thank you for joining us. Our debate this evening focuses exclusively on Bardstown in a race that will be decided on General Election Day, Tuesday, November the 8th. Due to the number of candidates in the field for the Bardstown City Council, 16 in all, PLG chose to split the candidates into two separate fields of eight. This split is based on a drawing that was held live on Facebook on Friday, October the 7th, and can be viewed archived on PLG's Facebook page. The first field we'll be debating right now, and the second field will be debating at 7:30 PM tonight. The split drawing was completely random, and there are absolutely no implications tied to either field or what time slot they are being presented here tonight. The seating order from left to right however is based on ballot positions, so now we present to you the candidates in the first live debate tonight here on PLG. From left to right, candidate in ballot position number one, Dick Heaton; candidate number four, Joe Buckman; candidate number six, Freddie D. Riggs; candidate number 10, Keisha J. Copeland; candidate number 12, Rick Malino; candidate number 14, William Buckman; candidate number 15, David Erickson; and candidate number 16, Lee Grigsby Evans. So without further ado, let's get to it. To make things simple tonight, all opening statements, answers, and closing statements will be limited to 90 seconds per candidate. So we'll begin with the opening statements from candidate Dick Heaton.
Good evening. My name is Dick Heaton. I'm a candidate for the Bardstown City Council. First, I'd like to thank PLG and the Kentucky Standard for sponsoring this evening's event. Certainly want to thank everyone who's watching and here this evening for taking part in this event. I'm running for the Bardstown City Council because, like so many of you, I've been frustrated and concerned with how the city's business has been conducted over the last two years. I think I have a lot to offer as a candidate and as a councilperson, having been elected previously for three terms on the City Council in 2000 to 2006, and as mayor from 2007 to 2010. I retired in 2010 due to some health reasons with cancer. I'm happy to report that I've been cancer-free now for six years, and I'm ready to come back and serve the community. I've been very involved in the community all my adult life, trying to make Bardstown and Nelson County a better place to live, work, and raise your family. And I think that extensive involvement has prepared me to be able to understand what the people's needs are. I've served in many capacities, from banking to real estate development, of course, the automobile industry. I've served in the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, site-based development, site-based systems in the high schools, and founded the Guthrie Opportunities Center for the adult developmental handicapped of this area. It's one of the most things I'm most proud of. So I think this background and previously having served prepares me to be a good candidate, and I'd appreciate your vote and support November 8th. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joe Buckman. I've been happily married to my wife Jenny Green from Asaline, Ohio, for 39 years. Jenny's a graduate of Miami, Ohio, with a master's in Rank One from the University of Louisville. She's retired special education teacher from Bardstown Schools, and she now currently owns a tutorial company that specializes in elementary students and nurses' training curriculum. I have a son Drew, who's an air traffic controller, and my daughter Lauren works as a flight attendant for Southwest Airlines. About myself, I've been employed in Bardstown since 1973. I've served on several boards and committees such as the Historic Review Board, Economic Development Board, Bardstown Main Street. I've been on the Episcopal Diocese and Board for the renovation of the All Saints Episcopal Camp in Rough River, and then countless other committees at Ascension Church. And also, I'm proud of being, I was a charter member on the Bethany Haven Board. And I've also served on the City Council for four years. And just one other thing I'd like to simplify is that there's another Buckman running, and just so voters won't think that they're voting for two members of the same family, Bill and I are not related. And one of my main reasons for being here is I absolutely love where I live, and I want to thank for this opportunity tonight.
Well, I want to thank you for tuning in tonight, and thank the PLG for having this debate tonight. My name is Freddie Riggs. Lived in Nelson County all my life, been in the city for over 40 years. Been married to my wife Becky McMahon for 42 years, two children, Gwen Oliver, Jeremy Riggs, five grandchildren. I decided to run for Bethany Haven, or Bethany Haven, pardon my notes, excuse me. I decided to run for City Council because I walked the streets for over two and a half years, and in these last two and a half years, I pray for this city, and I've walked pretty much every street in the downtown. And over these past two and a half years, I've been very concerned of the direction our city's been, has gone. And during this time, I just felt led to throw my name in the hat. I've worked part of, in the community. I've helped establish Bethany Haven, as Joe mentioned earlier. I'm a local minister, been ministering here for 42 years, 22 years at Faith Worship Center. And so I would do a great job. I think that God has gifted me with talents, good morals, good values, to be a city council, and I look for your support.
Good evening. My name is Keisha Copeland, and I am currently your Bardstown City Councilwoman. I'm originally from Bardstown, graduated from Bardstown High School, and also received a diploma from there, and then got my degree in human resource management. I am also a veteran of the United States Army, a war veteran. And so traveling around the world and serving my country, I really want to come home and serve my community as well. I also have three beautiful children, and I am a Mimi, so I have six grandchildren. My mom is out in the audience today. Her name is Sherry Hamilton-Copeland, and my father is Amber Copeland. They're both from Bardstown. The main reason for running for me is to make sure that I get re-elected, is that I want to continue being your voice. I want to continue answering your questions, but also, I want to focus on something that we didn't do this year, and that was the kids. We never focused on kids at all, and in order for kids to be our future, we have to invest in them, and that is something that hasn't been done. So I look forward to this debate. I thank PLG 13 and the moderators for taking their time, and to you, the community, for coming out and listening to us today. Thank you so much.
Hello and good evening. Thank you for having this, PLG and Standard. I'm Rick Malino, and it's good to be here with you tonight. I want to wish everybody on this stage good luck tonight, but first, a little something about me. I'm 65, born in Bardstown, and actually in the Historical District on East Stephen Foster before we had a hospital. I too do not agree with the direction we are headed in the Historical District because I do love this town. My parents were Charles Malino and Grace Malino. My dad was actually a City Council member back in the 60s. Both parents worked and retired from the bourbon industry here in Bardstown. I have been a real estate broker in Kentucky Home Realty for 15 years. I have two sons, Hamilton, who's 18, Nicholson, who's 12, and my wife Donna, of 21 years, who's actually a city school board candidate. I think she's here tonight. I'm running for City Council because I strongly disagree with what has happened under our present mayor, so I felt there was a need for someone like me, and I want to be part of "Take Back Bardstown" for the citizens that have no confidence in this present mayor's council. I want to put some common sense back into city decision-making. I want to decrease our spending and reduce our taxes. We need a better budget, so please, vote Malino.
Good evening. I'm William Buckman. I'd like to thank PLG for having us tonight for the debate. I've been a lifelong resident of Bardstown, Kentucky, for all my life, and attended Bethelm High School, graduated from there, and I attended Jefferson State Vocational School. I had 11 years in the US Marines, and I have one daughter and one granddaughter, Tiffany and Shelby. For years, I was a blue collar worker. I worked at Burden Sun for years. I worked at American Greetings for years, but in 1991, I chose to leave the factory work and join the Bardstown Police Department. There, I served 21 years until I retired in 2013. I was, I served with the K-9 program. I started the K-9 program here for 15 years, fighting the drug problem in Nelson County. I currently serve as a post-financial officer for Post Legion 121, and I'm the head gunsmith at Kentucky Gun Company. I've been on the council for the last two years. I've been head of the Safety Committee. I've been on the Annexation Committee, Street Committee, and the Electric and Cable Committee. My two years with the council has been a challenge. It's been rewarding, but difficult. I think we've made a lot of accomplishments. I think we've made progress. Progress is hard, it's sometimes people don't understand the way we're going, but I think we're on the right direction. We're working on it.
Good evening. I'm David Erickson. I'm actually raised in Minnesota. I'm a very proud Norwegian. I came here one day on vacation, stayed a week, did all your tour stuff that you guys have around here, walked Main Street, loved the town, went home, packed up, moved here a month later. I love this town. I want to keep this a great town. Most of my family has been in city government. My dad was, my grandfather was, my uncles were. I've been to college four times. Right now, I hold a degree in Applied Science. I'm a radiology tech. I've owned five businesses, very successful businesses. I've been, before I moved here, I lived in Missouri. I was on the Liberty, Liberty, Missouri City Festival Committee. I was on the Board of Chairman Program for pregnant teenage girls. I've been on church boards, and I'm also on the Bardstown Main Street Program. I'd like to see some changes done in this town. I hope that I can get on the board, give some of my views, and make some changes, and keep this town running like it should. Thank you.
My name is Lee Grigsby Evans, and I'm a native Bardstownian. I went away to college, came back 30 years later, and am so proud to be back in my hometown. A little bit about my background. My family has been in Bardstown for 150 years. We've been businessmen. My father and my grandfather were both businessmen. One owned a hardware store, the other an implement dealership here. And my maternal grandfather was a physician in Bardstown for many years, and his brother was a druggist. And the druggist name is still on the drugstore. The Croom Drugstore was my great uncle. So I feel that my tap roots go very deep in Bardstown. And when I came back, I wanted to continue on doing what I had always done since age 15, and that is participate in community service. I've lived in four different cities, progressive cities pretty much, over the years, and have always participated, have been on hospital boards, the Children's Hospital of Columbus, Ohio, and in Maryland. And I'm just anxious to come back to my hometown and again, participate in community service. And the highest forum I know right now is the City Council. I hope that you'll elect me as your next City Council member. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your opening statements, and we'll keep the mic where it is for the first question. We'll go back down that way. And for the first question, we'll have it asked by Kentucky Standard reporter Randy Patrick.
Ms. Evans, what letter grade would you give the mayor and the City Council over the last two years? And please give us some examples or specifics to back up your grade.
I think I would have to give the mayor and City Council a C, simply because I believe that there are certain, many, well, several people on the City Council who may have political or personal agendas. And I think the City Council's job is to deal with problems of policy and budget primarily. And it is set up with, we have a very strong mayor/council system here. In larger cities, there is a mayor and a city manager sometimes that has somewhat the same duties, but is specially trained to take the burden off of the mayor and work with the council. We have not had that system here, and I don't think it would work. So we have a strong mayor system. The mayor's job is to appoint people to department heads and to dismiss them at his pleasure. And the council is to deal with budgets of policy and the budget. So we need to stick to those things rather than deviate from the responsibilities of City Council.
Oh, okay. I agree, probably a C. Boy, that's a tough one. What I've read and what I've seen is there are a few people that have their own agenda. I see people not working together. Some of them do, some of them don't. And that's one of the reasons why I'd like to see a new board in there that can work together, no matter what their differences are. You should be able to sit down and discuss and come to a reasonable conclusion. What the mayor does, I know there's been a lot of talk, hate to say that, he's right there, but that he's got his own agenda and he's doing things behind people's back. I have no idea. I'd like to get to know him, find out if it's true. But yes, I'd give it a C. It needs, it needs a lot of work. I guess that's all I need to say about that right now.
Same question? Okay. How to rate, if you talk about this administration, or is it compared to past administrations? Every administration is different. Every administration has a different way of doing things. I'm not going to give a letter or a number. I think this administration is, I think we've done, gotten done things that the other past administrations has wanted to do. Past administrations entertained the occupational tax, they entertained separating the fire department. Those things we got done. The city's growing, and we need to move forward, and we need to be a progressive city. And the council has to learn to work together, whoever's seated in this next council. There was a lot of opposition, a lot of friction in the council, a lot of it from the wrong mayor being elected. There was a lot of amosity on that from the get-go. It was very obvious, obvious of a divided council, and that makes it harder. We worked, worked through it. The social, we had to deal with the social media, and that the other administrations never had to deal with as much, and we worked through it. We got a lot of accomplishments done. We got a lot of projects done, and the city goes on no matter what's, how the council acts. The city still has to operate. And if you go to the mayor and get information, then you'll be so. But if you never go to his office and get information, then you have no complaints.
It looks like the council's deadlocked on all the, on a lot of issues, which is making the mayor kind of go in a different direction, or the same direction he was accusing the previous mayor of doing. But this mayor is actually being a dictator rather than a mayor. For example, removing the bleachers, police department firing, some say that's personal. And lately, leaving the council meeting, that was very on-mayor-like, I think. And if I'm to give the mayor a grade, I would give him a failing grade, and because of all these issues at stake, I think the new chief should be, should have final approval from the new council. Thank you.
Same question, I guess. I would definitely say that the lack of transparency, the lack of information received, lack of trust by the residents and the council, going behind closed doors, sending an email to fiscal court, the police department, and just major decisions within the council meetings. If I had to give a grade, I would give a D-, and that is based on the lack of professionalism in the mayor's seat. When I think of leadership, I think of leading a group of people, leading a team, having a common goal. So that is why I give that, that grade. In reference to the council, I know that we had issues going on, especially in the first part of the year, but going on to the second, we, we came together in some sort of way. What all I can say is that when making a decision, sometimes it did look like it was deadlocked, but it, it wasn't. It was just, that was the way it was. We all have our own decisions. But what I want the people to know is that even with those decisions, I will always stand for the right thing, and that's for you. I will always stand up for the right thing for the citizens, and, and if that means that the decision is not one that the mayor wants, so be it. Thank you.
Well, as talking to most of the, lots of citizens, each and every day is a campaign, the feeling for the most part is that this council and mayor and all have not worked very well together. And that's not to say which one, or this one, but they just haven't come together and worked together to move Bardstown forward on a lot of things. The community mostly feels that it deserves a failing grade, and in some degree, I have to agree with that in some areas. They passed a budget that had a deficit in it. They doubled occupational taxes. These are things that hurts individuals. And they look for a mayor, they look for a council that can move in a positive direction, be for the people, help support the people, and they don't feel that this administration has fulfilled that duty. So we're looking for a new council to come together, work together, move Bardstown in a positive direction, and I know that I'm one of those that can do that.
Well, personally, I was hoping this wasn't going to turn into a bash the mayor gathering. I think there's some good things here that we can talk about. I think the mayor should, should, should get an A for his energy. And I think the mayor should get an A for, because I really believe that what he's doing, he thinks he's doing the best he can for the people of Bardstown. And he gets another A for his door is always open to anybody that wants to come in. The other thing, the other, there's, I think there's at least two or three members on the, on the council now that I'd also have to give an A, because I think they worked very hard, they were very interested in what they were doing, they worked very hard. Now, there's some other issues. When we get to transparency, I'm not going to give it a grade, but it's going to be, it would be a low one if I did. The confidence that the mayor has created with the people of Bardstown, that's got to be a low grade too. And then if all the allegations about the budget spending and stuff are true, I have to give him a very low grade on that one also. But that might also fall into the hands of the council. And some of this could have been avoided, a lot of this could have been avoided had the council members and the mayor been able to work together. And there's absolutely no reason why that can't be done, and that is our job here, is to serve the people, and we got to remember that.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Joe there. I don't think this is about the mayor this evening. This is about electing the City Council, and so I'm reluctant to be grading the mayor when we're trying to grade those of us running for the City Council, those seated on the City Council, and those of us who are running. I certainly think November 8th, the people will have the opportunity to grade those people who currently serve, and those of us who are, who are running as challengers. The overall feedback that I've gotten from the community is people are wanting change. They're not happy with how the City Council has performed, and they're not happy about the decorum in the meetings and the fractious debate that there has been. There's almost a personal, personal side, it seems to be, to most of the debate, both from the mayor and the councils. And I think they're looking for people who can be more civil in their discussions when they agree and/or disagree. So I think the election on November 8th will be the true grade of this council going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. We'll keep the microphone where it is, and we'll pass it back down for this next question, and it will be asked by Kentucky Standard editor Forrest Berkshire.
We won't spend all night on this, but I think this is, this is an issue that was apparent from the answers in the last, to the last question, but the last two years have been marked by splits between the mayor and some councilmen, and between different council members. What is needed for this next council to foster a working relationship, and what is it that you would bring to foster that relationship?
I think, you know, my past experience on the council and as mayor, I think if you, people that were around back then, would look back on those times as one where there was an ability to create consensus among council members. We didn't always agree with the mayors, and I know that the council that served with me when I was mayor didn't always agree with me, but the, the discussion was at a civil level. I think I'm a person that has a proven track record of getting things done. I'm able to bring people together and work towards a goal. I think my record in the public sector and the private sector will prove that. Was able to accomplish a lot of things, both as a councilman. The mayor's appointed me on long-term planning and on finance. All the times that I served as a councilperson, I took an active role in that. That's one thing that I always believe in. When I'm involved in a committee, or a community group, or a civic organization, I'm not one to sit back and, and follow. I feel like I'm a person that likes to take the lead, lead on things, and I would do the same, again, if I'm elected to this City Council. That is what you need. You need to put personal issues aside. You've got to be able to agree to disagree. I know we've had some contentious meetings back during Mayor Brown's term, but you know, no one, no one threw blows at each other verbally or whatever during the meetings, and certainly the mayor didn't get up and leave, and none of us got up and left. We worked through it. We had a veto at that time, which is very rare, and there was a veto, and we worked through it. Thank you.
I think civility at the meetings is the most important issue here. It's not a place to be having personal attacks. We don't need to be interrupting people when they're trying to speak. We need to show, that, we have to appreciate that someone that might have a different idea than us, and we have to, to honor that, their thoughts and think about that. But we also, you know, everything is in place here for a wonderful government here, for the mayor and the City Council. And maybe down the road, we need to just look into possibly having a few more checks and balances, and to avoid maybe hasty decisions. And if that kind of thing was to happen, maybe everybody would get along a little bit better. But right now, it just seems to me like, if we can get this transparency going, and people show a little respect to one another, because you know, we're all elected, we would all be elected officials, and we have to take that in consideration, because you know, we were elected by you people, and we got to show some respect to that, just like everybody in that council gets the same respect. And I think it would be a lot better if we would learn to do that.
As we look at the City Council, we, those that have been there, been in the As we look at the city council, we, with those that have been there, been in the meetings, those that have read some of the articles, there is definitely dysfunction and strife. And I think the first thing is that we have to elect a council that can work together, work with different people. That's one of my backgrounds as a minister. I worked with situations, families at all times, different, very difficult situations at times. But we're able to help people work together, work through those. I work very well as a mediator. But I can work with people. I don't bring personal agendas into the city council. My agenda is make it the best city and run the best we can. I don't have any bones to pick with anybody, but I just think that at times, we've been uncivilized. And I think that working relationships is one of the most important things. And I think that's what the people want to see. When we begin to hear from outside of the community, what in the world's going over there in Barge Town? They're always on the news. Well, we need to change that. And I think we can elect some common sense, creative people that'll work together to move Barge Town forward, and move it in the right direction. And I think that's what this new council will do. I think it will, we have relationships with the mayor, and I think we can work with him to move it in a positive direction.
We represent you, the people. And so we owe everything to you. You really owe us nothing. And so as we represent you, it is true that we do need to be a cohesive group and work together, respect one another. True that people have different opinions, but we also need to look at the body of the council, and see where we need to do more research amongst one another, understand and listen to one another. Sometimes it's where you're speaking, and, and you may be cut off, and you may have not finished what you were saying. So it's important that we work together. As a counselor, a mentor, and a resolution manager, that, that was my background, pulling people in and, and finding a common solution and working it out. I hope that with the next council, that we will have more open conversations, more transparency, and work toward a common goal for the city that elected us. You have the vote, you have the voice, but in turn, we, we owe it to you. We, we owe that voice to, to make sure that we're representing you in a, a manner that's respectable. And that may have not been done sometimes. And I hope that we get the chance, I get the chance, to work with a new council and, and get that done. Thank you.
Okay, great. You know, somebody's got to be held accountable for everything that's been going on. Is it the mayor's fault? Is it the council's fault? You know, we, we have a great choice to make here now. The city's out of control, and it's pulled away from the county, and the city has not learned how to live within their city budget yet. I want to put common sense decision-making back in the city. We need to eliminate the waste and fraud. The city has the means to be great. But we need to decrease spending, maybe reduce your taxes a little bit. City and county needs to play together to share the expenses. Thank you.
Well, my hope is that this next council, we can seat six members that can work together, communicate, move the city forward. When I came on the council two years ago, it's a whole different world as a councilman. You have a budget, you have line items, you have a lot of responsibility, you have a, it's a learning process that these people don't realize, and that, that you're, that I'm working for the taxpayer. I'm not working for the county, I'm working for the city. They elected me to save them money, to adjust the budget, and try to get the most out of their money. You know, I was on the safety committee, I was on the fire separation, I was in the negotiations on all of it. A lot of that is inevitable. There was no negotiations, the negotiations were stopped by the other parties. I think the mayor and the committees did all they could do to try to amend. But these inter-local agreements were so lopsided and out of balance. And the city taxpayer has been paying twice for services that the county pays once for. And that, that's what, we need a council that's going to step up and, and work for the city people. You know, I'm not here to get along with the county, I'm here to make it an equal partnership, and to make the taxpayers' money go for what it's supposed to go for, and to get the most of our money out of taxes, because our budget is striped as it is.
Well, I agree with everything everybody said with getting along. It hasn't happened yet. And as voters, you need to vote in the right people. Like I said, I own five businesses, I've ran two chains, I've had a lot of employees, I've had a lot of people that had come to me with different ideas. It's, it's, I think, instead of a slate, which has been brought up before, that everybody should come in with different ideas. Sit down, work. Your idea may not come to light, but you can sit down, decide what's best for the city. My idea may not be great, you're, and not even fly, your idea may not be great, mine would be better. It's, it's just something that the council needs to sit down and quit arguing, bickering, having their agenda. And I hope that, I, I personally, and one thing I tell people when I talk to them, I'm not going to fight. And they go, they go, well, you're not going to fight for us? No, I'll fight for you, but I won't, and I would listen to you as citizens what you want, but I am not going to sit at a table and fight with the council. I'll put my views down, and hopefully, the new council can set and agree on stuff instead of arguing.
I think this transparency idea is, is most important. We have created an air, an atmosphere here with the council and the mayor that is contentious. And when you have a contentious atmosphere, you don't solve the problems of the city, which is what we are chosen, elected to do, is solve the problems of the city. With cooperation and just listening, and I'm a peacemaker, so I want to do that. I think you need to agree to disagree with some time, but you need to come to a consensus on problems. Otherwise, the problems never get solved if you can't, if you can't have a consensus on the city council and an agreement with the mayor. The mayor brings the problems to light to the council. The council then is the legislative part that, that has to really solve those problems with their discussion and working together on solving the problems of the city. The city's problems are paramount, and that's what we're elected to do, is solve the problems of the city.
All right, thank you all. We'll keep the mic there, and I'll be asking this next question. The city has used utility reserves to balance its budgets, and those reserves are now depleted. How does the city remedy this financial issue? Are new taxes or revenue streams needed? Is there any alternative to using reserves to balance the budget?
I am sure that by now, the reserves are beginning to be filled again with the taxes coming in to the city. We have just raised the occupational tax, which is probably going to help those reserves out a lot, a lot, too. Property taxes are the other, is the other method of revenues for the city. I think probably the property taxes will remain the same, they have remained the same. So we will probably get rid of that deficit very shortly. As a matter of fact, I checked on the budget just recently, and it's, the deficits have started to, to fill in. So I, I really believe that you can only take so much out of reserves before you have to, to fill them up again, so to speak, something in the pocket for a rainy day in case things come up. But I think that's happening, and I think with a less contentious atmosphere of city council, I think we can remedy that situation very well.
That's a really interesting question. The city's had a couple of years of fun spending money that should have been left alone. And now, we're, we're hurting because of it. The answer, I really can't tell you. I think with a new council, we need to sit down and decide what we can do and what we can't do. At this point, I mean, there's a budget out there already, but I don't know what we could do. Raising taxes, I mean, we really don't want to do that. Other ways, businesses, raising business taxes. It's, that's a tough one, and I, I don't know how to answer that one. That's, that's one that needs to be studied, and studied really hard of what we can do. That's one question I just cannot give a straight answer to, because people don't want their taxes raised. I, I don't. I live in town, I don't want my taxes raised, they're already high enough. But we all, we do need to raise money.
With utility funds that, that was created back years ago by our forefathers, being smart enough to sell utilities and stuff instead of having private entities do it, and that's created a lot of money for the city over the years, and been used for a lot of good projects. I believe in using the utility funds, which is not broke. I checked the other day with the finance, and we're back up to $8 million in the utility funds. So it, it generates itself back. Past administrations went down to $200, $250,000 in the, in the fund, and it comes back. But I agree that we may limit ourselves from drawing from utility revenues in the future, and that, that'll be done, because we finally got the occupational tax through. And that's going to generate 4.2 million this year. And that'll give us, that'll take up the shortfall that we had on the budget, that we had to supplement with the, the utility funds. So we'll be dipping into that less, and that'll be used more for the infrastructure and for major utility projects that the city needs to, to keep going, so we can draw industry into our city and rebuild our infrastructure. So I'm not against using the utility funds. We need to move away from it, and there's not, we'd have no need for new taxes. The utility fund, the occupational tax creates enough revenue that we, this new council, whoever it is, will have a working numbers that they can work with better. So there's no new taxes on the horizon.
My thoughts on the budget is if we don't get it, get a handle on this, it's going to be, we're going to be in trouble. People no longer want to move here, but to the most beautiful small town in America. Our town is blessed. We must move in a more positive direction than hearing our citizens are moving out. I know I keep saying this, but if we're not sharing expenses with the county, we are not, we are having a lot of waste. We are increasing our spending instead of decreasing, causing a tax increase. Thank you.
Our council took action by voting to generate more revenue in the general fund by increasing the tax. This would alleviate the need to use utility dividends. I believe that we're on the right path now. I can't say that the first year that the new council takes seat, that they will eliminate use of the utility funds. But what I want the community to know is this. I, I actually had to go into the office and, and find out why things are going on. And that's why you elect us, is to find those answers for you. But when we had projects, the water project, the sewer project, those systems right there are over 50 years old. With the, the growth of our city, new people coming in, new factories coming in, we want that economic development. We have to do something. Then being alerted that, you know, it, it may not be legal to use those utility reserves, we had to take action. Projects that we have, they, they may take two physical years combining together. And when that happens, that affects those budgets. And it looks like, oh goodness, they're, they're recklessly spending. No, those two budgets, those, those numbers come together, because you, we have specs that have to be done, permits that have to be done, and that's what takes long for everything to happen. Thank you.
Well, as we, we look at a $40 million, $48 million budget, you know, it takes a lot of money, and, and there are times that you are going to have to dip into the revenue that's created to help out in a budget. But, and the new tax that has been passed is, is going to alleviate that issue for now. But as a growing city, growing pains come when you grow. And we're always going to have issues, but we need to be more creative. There ought to be times where we look at the budget and see what can be cut, where we can cut, what can be put on hold for time from time to see other things move forward. So, you know, as we look at this, we have to reduce spending, we have to be more conservative in what we're doing. We have to, we just can't come to a council meeting and vote on a whim, vote on just a few moments. We need to look for the future, we need to think about where we're going the right direction. I know the mayor's done a good job in, in providing information to the council, but as, once I said earlier, I've been to a lot of council meetings, and sometimes, I'm not sure that they've studied the material. So that's a reason, another reason I'm running for city council. We need people, common sense, that are working for the city, and not just showing up for meetings and making decisions at the last minute.
I think when, when the cap was lifted, obviously, there's going to be enough money there for the next couple of years anyway. I hate to say it that way, but I had a very wise businessman tell me this five years ago, when we went in to get, to raise it to half percent. And he said, you know what's going to happen? He said, you're going to get the money, you're going to spend all the money, and you're going to be back here in five years asking for it again. And sure enough, that's exactly what happened. So how do, how do, what do we do here now? Well, one of the best ways, obviously, is if you can, to cut spending. I think another way is hopefully, we can mend some fences with the county and get some of these programs that we had together back together and share some of those costs. Some of the money that's been spent, obviously, is for capital improvements, capital projects over the last couple of years, so that, that money was used wisely there. I think the biggest thing we can do is just, is each department stays within its budget. And one of the things that really bothered me the most when I was on the city council before is when we had major projects, and the amount of change orders that would come in on these projects, it just blew me away to, to think they could just come back and ask for money and get it. And I think that really needs to be watched. But I would like to see some of our programs get back with the county, and let's, hopefully we can share some costs that way.
I think that the recent increase in the occupational license fee will be more than sufficient to handle the revenue needs. What concerns me a lot is since the time I was in office, the general fund has gone from about $6 million to $8.4 million. It's a 33% increase in six years. Certainly, I think there's lots of ways we could control that, that rise in, in spending there. The, the use of the reserves, really, a lot of people think they've just been used for things not normally useful, but they have been primarily used for infrastructure projects. $3 million or so last year, another $3 million scheduled for this year. The main difference, though, is there, lately, there has not been a mechanism to restore and build those reserves back after they've been spent. They went from $7 million two years ago down to about $4 million now. And this year, they're scheduled to spend the $3.2 million. However, they- However, they can correct that with a loan for the water treatment plant project, which is two point three million. So that'll build the reserves back up to three million. It's not a great situation, but we've got to stop taking, they've been taking dividends from all the utilities to the tune of one point three million on top of the reserves spending. And that's gotta change. And I think part of that will change because of the occupational license fee, but I know how to control those things and I've been spending a lot of time studying it, but we gotta stop this utility dividend to the tune of one point three million on top of the reserves to get those reserves where they need to be. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. This will be the last question before closing statements and we'll have Randy Patrick ask this.
All right, and this is sort of a multi-part question. What can the city do to improve the quality of life for its residents? What are your views on the city's role in managing growth, including traffic congestion and maintaining our small town atmosphere?
That is pretty open-ended there, Randy. Well, I think there's a number of things. As far as traffic, you've got to have a good working relationship with Frankfurt. That's where most of the money comes to improve the traffic issues and make changes to the highways that our town is intersected by mostly state and federal highways. So that's where that's gonna have to come from. As far as improving the quality of life, I think one thing we need to look forward is where our, our new raw water supply will come from. It's been debated now for a number of years. No firm decisions have been made whether we need to another reservoir, we need to take water out of Salt River, or change our relationship with Louisville Water Company. But water would be an important thing for quality of life. I would think that a better indoor recreation facility with perhaps an indoor pool and meeting rooms and walking tracks and multi-use gymnasium type facilities would be an excellent way to improve the quality of life. Finally, I think our economy is great right now. We have a, but a tremendous shortage in skilled labor. If we could get more of our young people trained and skilled, they would have a higher quality of life because there's a one, amazing amount of jobs out there that could be filled. Every economic sector is looking for jobs and we've got to really make sure that our youth get that training where they can have higher paying jobs, which will result in a better quality of life for them. Thank you.
First off, I, I would like to shout out to Kim Houston. I think Kim has done an excellent job of economic development and bringing businesses to Bardstown. If I could have my wish list here, how to make life a little better here and make things better for everybody. I think we need to capitalize on this title that we have, the Bourbon Capital of the World. And we also have another little title nobody's even mentioned tonight, the most beautiful town, most beautiful small town in America. And we still need to capitalize more on that things, all that stuff. That will, that will bring more restaurants, that'll bring hotels. And, you know, people are looking for that, new businesses, new companies coming to town, they want some of these amenities. And it might be, and it's not simple, but, you know, a connector bike and walk path around this city is paramount over the next few years if we're gonna attract good people to this town. And that would be my dream if we could connect some of those things together. Okay, thanks.
Traffic is, has increased a lot with the new Thomas Nelson out on two forty-five, the hospital out there. It creates a lot of traffic with the schools early in the morning and afternoon. And there again, as Dick mentioned, some of that works with the state. I think one of the positives that we need to work with state and is pushing for the bypass that will alleviate traffic. And that way we can keep some of the traffic from out of downtown, that it is more, because it, as Joe said, the most beautiful small town. But we need to promote tourism and, and our attractions that we have. But sometimes the traffic congestion makes it hard for tourists to get around, to see everything. I think once we began to do that, we have the Civil War Museum, we have all the Village, I think we can use that as an attraction to promote business to come. I think our city, we need to apply for awards and accolades that will help promote our city, that we will have finances to do things. We do, the city did apply for a grant, it's an eighty-twenty grant that will cover sidewalks down two forty-five all the way up to Chambers Boulevard, down to Templin Avenue, which will be a great walking path for, for people. We have a lot of things. One is our air quality control. We, you know, we just need to try to move the traffic out of our city and begin to do things in a positive direction and that's what I'm here for.
Improving the quality of life for residents, I truly believe that we do have a good quality of life, but to make it even better, I believe in looking at the kids, their environment of the kids, and what we do not have and what we could have as a community as a whole. We do not have a recreation, we have a recreation center for them, but the functioning of the recreation center. We need to have it where parents can take their kids to the swimming pool, an indoor swimming pool, or have things for them in an indoor facility. Right now, our kids are going outside of our community to swim, to do things that they could do right here and that would bring even more revenue to our city. It would fill up the hotels, not that they're not being filled up, but it would fill them up because we would have conferences here. So I think we should invest more into the children because we have working parents here and they want their kids to enjoy the life as well. Also, I would also like to thank the staff at the City of Bardstown because as far as water and sewer, they're working hard on it. And that's important, when you think about tap coming out, you wanna think about that clean water. And we were recognized as one of the best, actually. So I wanna thank them for that as well. But as a quality of life, I really think that we have to invest in the kids. It's that important because Bardstown matters.
Of course, if we don't grow, we can't give good service to our city and county residents. And that's why this election is so important. The new council will have the opportunity to add to the existing comprehensive plan. But I would like to commit that I think that we will see positive growth in our city and county for the next four to six years. It's a very exciting time for us here in town. And yes, Joe, I think Kim Houston is doing a great job in Zeta. Thank you.
Well, overall, I think we have a great city. I think the individuals in Bardstown have worked diligently to make it a great community downtown. The downtown area and the historical district's being maintained. The streets are being maintained better in this administration, more sidewalks are going in, more black toppings going in. What I ran on two years ago was the water system. I still think we need a, a new water source. I think that one day that we're gonna have problems with it. I'm not forgiving into Louisville Water and giving up our system for them. That's something we need to work on. And quality of life, we've got a lot of industry coming in, we have a lot of, a lot to offer to the industries and we have a good workforce here. It's getting better all the time. The traffic, we're subject to state roads, we're encompassed with state roads, there's only so much the city can do. There's already bypasses and projects in, in the works that, that the government in Frankfurt is, you know, it's no telling when we'll get to them. I think it's gonna be an ongoing problem, the traffic's more, we brought new, five new industries in this, this year, five new factories. That's gonna put more people and more traffic in our downtown area. But that brings us back to Kim Houston. I think she's done a fabulous job, I'm very impressed with her, and we need to keep her.
I think we're, being the world capital of bourbon is great and we have drawn a lot of people from that. We need to build on that. The other thing, I love what Keisha said about children. I think this town needs more stuff for children, for families. We're drawing in the couples, older people, people love bourbon, we're doing great things with that, but families, we really need to do more with families. This town is growing, there's lots more kids. Indoor pool's great, more play areas, more parks, more bike routes, walkways. We could do a lot. Infrastructure we need to think about in the future. It's old, it is old, we need to work on that. Traffic, I know they, there's talk about bypasses and stuff, but that's gonna be down the road, that's just something we're gonna have to deal with for a while. But I just think we need to keep building on what we have.
I think Bardstown should be very proud of their community. We have a professional theater here, it's just unheard of for a community of our size. We have wonderful tourist attractions and we have preservation that is in our midst. I sit right now on the Historic Review Board and preservation is a very important part to me in contributing to the charm of Bardstown and the attraction for tourists here. We have festivals, the Bourbon Festival is out of, out of sight. It draws so many tourists from all over the country and the world. So, but each of these things puts a strain on our city services because those tourists who come into town have to, they demand service increases. They need to be protected with the fire and police department, they expect that. Industries do not locate here unless they examine the efficiency of the fire and police department. They need to be protected. And the quality of the water, of course, and the user services. That's all a consideration. But we're just so fortunate in Bardstown to have so many things that draw people into our community. And what we as a city council have to do is make sure that all of these city services are up to date. One of the things that I love, that I hope to address at some point in time would be recycling.
All right, thank you, thank you all. And we'll move now to closing statements. These going along with everything else will be ninety seconds and we'll start with you. Thank you.
As a longtime citizen of Bardstown, I am very, very proud of this community. My deepest desire is to work to improve it and that's really my reason for running for city council is that I want to see the growth protected, I want to see the city's citizens protected, and I want to see Bardstown progress. And I will try my best to make that happen. I hope that I can work with all of the council if I'm elected and the mayor, of course. And I think that this town has so much to be proud of that I want it to continue.
I'd be excited to serve this city. As a candidate, I am running to speak for the people of Bardstown. We need to review the budget and rebuild our reserves. Our infrastructure is in need of being rebuilt, relations need to be mended between the city and the county. New people and new ideas is what we need. We need to stop spending, regroup with a new board, get our priorities straight, working with the money we have now and look at ways of increasing income. I'm here to listen to what you want as a, as a citizen, what you want the city to be in ten years. Think of the future. The board should not be running their own agenda. They should be working for the people. We don't need a slate or a good old boys' club, let's start fresh and build a great city. Stop me anytime in town, I walk all the time, I work at Peoples', you can stop, talk to me, give me your ideas. This town needs to be proud, not embarrassed.
Hopefully in the next two years, when I'm elected, if I'm elected, I'll put back in faith. In the past two years, I've always worked with one thing in mind, what's best for the city, what's best for the, the community, what's best for the city, people that live in the city. I worked for twenty-one years protecting this city, I was born and raised here, and I will continue to work for the betterment of the city. Everything that I do, everything I've thought, everything, decision I made was for the progress of the city. We have a great city, we've worked hard to keep it that way and we're, it's constantly building. There's a lot of growth coming in and then whoever has to take this torch and go is, has a lot of work ahead of them. And I've, I've never missed a council meeting, I've never missed a committee meeting, I've spent endless hours researching and working behind the scenes and trying to get the, the best decision for the city. And that's who I work for. I work for the voters, I work for the city. And that's, that's what I'll do for another two years. I'll give it a hundred percent as I did the last two years and make the decisions that I think will progress the city and for the best of the city that put me here.
For the last three years, I've been a member of the Joint County City Planning Commission on the Bardstown Board of Adjustments. I see a great need for the city and county to work together. We are not doing this. Our county comprehensive plan works best when the city and county work well together and it's obviously not happening, which is causing a lot of waste expense, causing the need to raise your taxes. So I would just wanna say, stop the spending and stop the madness. Thank you.
I would like to ask you to support me on November the eighth and vote for me. I truly believe that this is the best city that I have ever lived in and that's across the nation. We have so much to offer for everyone. And what I ask you today is this, is to think of this. When you go to vote, vote for the person that represents you best. Vote for the person that represents all people, that has the voice for all people. When you go to vote, that is, that is your conscience talking to you and that, that's a major decision, it's nothing to be taken lightly. And I just ask you to get out the vote and just vote. I hope that within the next two years with the new council, that many relationships are mended, that we are able to work with one another and transgression into a new and stronger and a bonded council, one that speaks for everyone, one that wants the best for everyone. Reaching out to all people across the state, mending those relationships that are across the state as well. I love this city, this, this is my heart and soul, and so, once again, I just ask that you vote for me on November the eighth. Thank you so much.
As I seek city council, I'd like to say that you can trust me. I hold good morals and good values and I will do that as a councilman that represents this city. I will be respectful to others at all time, respectful to the citizens, listen to the citizens, listen to their concerns and be an advocate for them and be a voice for them also. I am very creative, I have creative thoughts, ideas, and I think that we can use that in our city council. I'm a common sense kinda guy. You see me whether it's sitting up here or out on the streets or in the pulpit preaching or at a city council, I'm the same person always. I don't become one to, at somewhere else, so my life can be examined by that. I'll use common sense each and every day in every decisions. And I will work with the mayor and with the council to, and I will respect them and when we have disagreements, we, they may be at times, we will disagree, but we'll move forward and move Bardstown on. As a councilman, I will promote responsible spending, which is very important for the council that's coming up. And also I will support the economic vitality of downtown Bardstown to keep Bardstown the most beautiful small town and promote it and its festivals that we have. So I ask you for your support and vote for Freddie Riggs, number six, on November the eighth.
There's a little saying that really haunts me sometimes and it kinda goes like this, our priests use it at church a lot. our priest uses it at church a lot, it says, "I'm really glad that God has blessed me with just enough foolishness to think I can do what others say can't be done." And, you know, I love where I live, and I really want to see Bardstown maintain its status as the most beautiful small town in America, and mostly the promotion of the Bourbon Capital of the world. We always have work to do, but everything is possible if we all do it together and in harmony. If we continue our quest to be the best, it is paramount that the city and county governments have a good working relationship. I think the council's role is to ensure peace, order, good governance, and to improve citywide quality of life. We are here to serve you. There is no doubt that Bardstown is faced with a rapidly crumbling confidence in our government. This election is the opportunity for the people of Bardstown to speak, to elect representatives who will address the lack of transparency in spending and in building strong, independent law enforcement free from cronyism and pressure. We need to elect a council that speaks for the needs of Bardstown and stand firmly together facing the challenges to the smooth and successful governance that Bardstown has earned and deserves. I think if the right people are elected, civility can return to the city council and subsequently between the city council and the mayor. Thanks.
I overlooked a very important person when I had my opening comments, so I can't end it without thanking my wife, Alice Willard Heaton, who's been my wife for 34 years, and my family, my two sons, Nicholas and Jonathan, and his wife Lena, for putting up with, in their lifetimes, me being gone for days and hours weekly, and that same energy that I've devoted to this community for the last 40 years is what I plan to devote if I'm elected in this next election. As I said earlier, my record is one where I feel like I was able to work well with two mayors that I served with. When I was a mayor, I felt like I worked well with city councilmen. I think that will not be a problem going forward. I also worked well with the fiscal court. The judge and I would drive to Frankfurt together and go to the transportation cabinet and fight for funding. We went there and worked on funding for infrastructure monies, for water tanks and water towers, and improvements at our water treatment plant. So I wanted to leave you with this. Tonight, you've got to remember that elections have consequences. All you have to do is look at two years ago, what happened two years ago, to understand the consequences that came from that election. The other thing I want you to take away is, don't waste your vote, don't stay at home. This is going to be a very, very close race between six people trying to get elected out of 16. Every vote's going to count. So please, get out and vote, and I'd appreciate your vote and support on November 8th. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thanks to all the candidates for joining us here tonight for our live debate here on PLG TV 13, the first in a series of two for the Bardstown City Council. And a reminder, we'll have that next one. We were hoping for 7:30, it might be a few minutes after that, so be tuned to your television set at around 7:30, and we will get to that one. Look for this debate to be archived to our website at plgtv.com, and it will also be replayed this weekend. Stay tuned to PLG for those replay times. Thanks to the panelists beside me, Kentucky Standard Editor Forrest Berkshire and Kentucky Standard Reporter Randy Patrick. A special thanks to our producers, John White and Matt Gordon, and PLG's Jamie Sizemore and Danielle Mattingly. A thanks to Will Blair for his assistance with lighting, the Nelson County Government's for use of the Civic Center, and also a special thanks to Mike Vinito with the Bardstown Cable for his awesome work as well. I'm Matthew Fogel, grab a sandwich, and stay tuned as we will present the next debate session for the Bardstown City Council with the other eight candidates coming up here in just a few minutes at around 7:30.